Centola, Guerrero, yes, Leeper, yes, Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Here.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams. Okay, now, Mr. Britton, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Well, the flag never made it back from our...
Awards night.
...award's night.
Okay, so let's just...
There's one in the office over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not sure where that went. It's in the library, how to get in there? All right. We used to be in the library all the time.
All right, do we have any visitors that want to address the board?
No one contacted me. I can get on the agenda and speak, so.
Okay. Consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions regarding consent agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move.
Motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second? All second. Martha Leeper, call Oakley's. Mm-hmm. Guerrero, yes. Leeper, yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, and superintendent.
I don't have that.
No, we don't. We have old business, none new business. Okay.
First item is the tentative budget, or the amended budget, rather, I'm sorry. And basically, the amended budget, what you do is, I basically did the budget all over again. I took, I got a snapshot of exactly where we are right now, as far as expenditures. Projected those out through the end of June, along with our revenue. And I thought really the best way to show this to people is probably do the summary of cash transactions page, which shows each of your funds. The very top column is where we started in July 1st of 2015. The next line down, line four, will be the receipts and other sources. So that's your revenue. And then, working our way down, are the expenditures. And you can see that in the Ed Fund, the number at the bottom is $48,640. I'm projecting that the Ed Fund will finish in the red for this school year. The overall fund balance is $701,898. And a good portion of the deficit is some of the things that we bought, or like the library textbooks, some of the things that we will not have to buy every year. That's the difference in where we are finishing year up, as far as our revenue compared to expenditures. I do believe that that will, that number may decrease by the time we get all of our state aid payments in, which should be in hopefully by the 30th. And I'm hoping that that comes in a little bit higher than what I had initially projected, so. Again, the Ed Fund, a negative balance of $48,640. But I think, I don't think it's anything to worry about. Pay staff out of that fund, and that is one of our biggest expenses. And that wasn't the cause this year for us to spend in the red, so I think that's a positive thing. Operation maintenance, we started the year out with $673,705. And we're going to end the year up at $638,526. Again, we deficit spend in the operation maintenance. That pays your custodians and your maintenance help. Also, improvements that are made to the facilities are taken out of that. And we have done a lot, and we're going to continue to do a lot. One of the things, I spoke with our auditor, and what Carol and I are going to do, we're going to sit down over the course of the next week or so, and look and see if we cannot move some funds out of the Macon County sales tax, Macon Christian County sales tax money, and to cover some of the deficit in that fund. And the reason we can do that is, we had two bathrooms upstairs. One of them broke and flooded, the pipes broke and flooded over Christmas break. And we pulled our maintenance people off to do that. And our auditors said that as long as we are paying those people to do actual repairs and maintenance, that we can take money out of that, out of the sales tax money to do that. Typically, you do not pay staff with that, but my question to her was, well, if we hire a contractor, they're going to have people, and we're going to pay the contractor, which is in turn going to turn around the people. And she said, well, if you put it that way, that's fine, as long as it has to do with repairs to the building, not routine maintenance and custodial work, so. Again, I think you'll see, when I go over the final numbers, we'll do mean, I think this number will decrease as well. Debt service, that is to pay off our working cash bond, and that's pretty much done. Transportation was very positive compared to last year. We deficit spent in the transportation fund last year. And this year, we're looking at a positive balance of $92,779. Ryan was able to manipulate some of our routes and reduce a route, which is very beneficial. And also, the overall cost of diesel and gas has went down as well. So that has helped out the transportation fund. IMRF, the retirement fund for all of our workers. And you can see that we finished at $20,762 in the black. Capital projects, the beginning balance was $339,722. Ending balance of $399,511, which gave us a surplus of $59,789. Working cash, again, we sold a bond for a million dollars here a few years ago, plus the money that has kind of developed over time in that fund. So the fund balance will be at 1.5, just a little over 1.5 million dollars. And the second, I'll explain to you why that is going to be significant for us. Tor, liability insurance, that sort of thing, $84,921 to begin the year out. And we're at $86,985 for a surplus of $2,064. And then, our final on fire prevention and safety, $170,927 to start the year off. And we're at $185,277 with a surplus of 14 through 50. So I think overall, we did pretty well, considering some of the improvements that we've made, and that we're going to continue to hopefully do over the course of the next several years. I mentioned a little bit about the working cash. I went to a workshop in Springfield yesterday, and the big talk was that if they do not pass a budget, there would be no state aid. If no state aid passed out to the districts, a lot of school districts will not even be able to open their doors in August. I hope that it doesn't get to that point for the children's sake. It seems to be like our legislators are using our children as pawns, which is disgusting. But that's what they're, that's basically their plan, to put pressure on the governor to pass a budget, so our kids can start schooling for them. So we did the working cash bond, I think it was three years ago now. Mr. Fowler did that. And again, that was for a rainy day, and the rainy day may be here quicker than what we'd hoped. But the way our fund balance sets, I would project, and I won't have the final numbers until the audit's done in the fall, but I would say that we're probably right around almost a school year where we could operate on our reserves, which that's, a lot of districts would not be able to do that. And like I said, some are not even able to open their doors, so. I think it was a pretty wise move. Nobody could have foreseen this. And one of the things they talked about is, things that are going on in Springfield right now are unprecedented. They've never seen anything like this before. They've never gone this long without a budget. Somebody, one of my friends that I went to high school with and to college with, he's been a superintendent now for about 10 years. And he said, boy, you picked a really good year to become superintendent. I'm like, yeah, I'm starting to realize that, so. But that's kind of where we are budget-wise. And I would recommend that we approve the amended budget.
So then, I need a motion to accept the amended 2015-16 budget as presented. So, Martha Leeper, is there a second?
All second.
Jeff Stahl, call Oakley's. Leeper, yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
So then, I need a motion to set the hearing as part of the regular board meeting on June 15th, 2016.
I move. Very quickly, before getting into that, just to explain that a little bit. Just like the tentative budget, this budget has to sit on display for 30 days in the superintendent's office, where people can come in and take a look at it. And then, they'll come back and do the adoption at the June meeting. So now, if you can, sorry, go ahead and retire.
Okay, so, motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second? By Jeff Stahl? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes? Okay, and?
And I did not see this. Our regular June board meeting was scheduled for the 22nd. Since we moved up to the May meeting, we can now move the June meeting back to the third Wednesday of the month that we typically do. So again, on our schedule, it was originally scheduled for the 22nd. I recommend that we go ahead and do it on the 15th.
Okay, so then, we would need a motion to set the June board meeting for June 15th at 7:00 PM.
I move.
Motion made by Jeff Stahl, is there a second?
All second.
By Mike Oakley, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, and then, the calendar?
We utilized one emergency day this year, which will move our teacher incident day back to the, to May 19th. And it's something that I have to amend the calendar and send our final calendar into the State Board after our last day of school. So without something crazy happening, we should be able to get out of school on May 19th. So I would recommend that we adopt the final 2015-16 calendar.
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the final 2015-16 school calendar as presented.
I move.
Motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second?
A second.
Martha Leeper, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then, for the bids?
Yeah, every year, we have to put out bids for our dairy, our bread, and our groceries. And I would ask approval for me to seek those bids.
Okay, so, motion for superintendent to seek bids on dairy, bread, and groceries for the 2016-2017 school year.
So good.
Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
All second.
Mike Oakley, sorry, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then, on to the district audit.
At the end of our fiscal year, the auditors come in and they take a look at our books and make sure that we've done everything, I guess, the way that we're supposed, we're supposed to run our business. And we've used Floyd and Associates for as long as I can remember. Mr. Fowler kind of pulled the superintendents from Macon County last year to check and see who they used and cost. Floyd and Associates are very competitive with what the other districts were using. Based on our familiarity with them and others with us, I would recommend that we use Floyd and Associates as our auditors.
Did the cost go up much at all this year?
About $1,000.
So I need a motion to hire Floyd and Associates as our auditors at a cost not to exceed $8,250.
I move.
Motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second?
Second.
By Mike Oakley, call Oakley's. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Summer work?
Mm-hmm.
I provided you a list of summer work items.
I don't have the email.
You emailed it. Well, I think I only emailed it to you and Michael. Anyway, I can go through here. That's one of the reasons I cut some of the other parts short, because I wanted to have time to explain this anyway. But here are some of the things that we would like to do over the course of the summer. We'd like to extend the basketball court surface over at Harris Town, or Sangamon Valley East Elementary. I don't know if you've ever been back there and looked, but there's about an eight-inch drop from where the asphalt goes down and drops down, and then goes on back to the playground. And that happens immediately right after the basketball poles. Which I would envision a kid shooting a layup and his momentum carrying him over that and twisting an ankle, or running back into the building and face planting. So what I've asked Bruce to do is to get some bids and to extend the basketball surface by three feet all the way around. It's kind of an L-shaped situation over there. And Hutch and Escavating, so they would come in and they would saw the asphalt back, so it would be a nice smooth transition from the asphalt to the concrete, and then extend that past the poles. And then, what we plan to do is backfill from that point on out to where we have the new mulch. And eventually, we'll have the new timbers in place. So that should make that area a nice place for the community to go and play during the baseball games and softball games, and also for our kids to use during the school, so. Bruce and Jason will also finish the playground border. We have some volunteers at Harris Town that would like to do some painting for that. We have provided paint. What group is going to do that?
It's Pabrikel Church.
I would like to install four smart boards over at Harris Town, or Harris Town Campus, as the, in the Valley East Elementary. That will pretty much catch us up on Peramithium boards, I believe, in all of our buildings. Where every teacher and every classroom will have a Peramithium board. I feel like it's something that we probably should have done a while back, but. I've also asked the staff to run electricity out to the flagpole. Again, these are all items that are happening at Sangamon Valley East Elementary. Run electricity to the flagpole, so we can keep that lit up at night. They're going to work on caulking the windows on the east side of the building. We do have some moisture that's penetrating those windows. We had a wireline freeze in the, what could be the northwest corner of the building. So we have some, we kind of got it band-aid patched right now to kind of finish out the school year, but they're going to repair that. And the last item was to add central air to the office. And I don't know if you've ever been in there where Carrie sets, but there's Carrie, and then there's a wall unit of, air conditioning unit, which blows right on her face. And when it's on, you can't hear anybody. And so I'm going to recommend that we put central air in not only that office, but the office at Sangamon Valley West Elementary as well. Brian's got kind of a different situation over there. He's got two wall units in his office, none in the outer office. So to get Mrs. Lee cooled off in the outer office, he has to freeze the head.
Yeah, she lets me know about it quite a bit, so.
Sure she does? So we asked Han and Eric King to come out and give us a bid. Eric King came in the lowest. Michael has asked if, what was that?
Design Air.
Design Air.
Or possibly, in Harris Town, there's also Jesse King in cooling.
Okay. I'm going to have Bruce contact both of those. We have time. So what I would recommend on that motion is, or when we approve this, is that we do it for a amount not to exceed the Harris Town Elementary, $7,040. And at Eliot, plus $6,940. But I think that will be, we can go ahead and make a motion to do that, and we can check in on the other bids. Hopefully, they come in well. I'm not sure. Sangamon Valley West Elementary, we are going to remove the floor tile in the kitchen this summer. The staff will have to remove all of the cooking equipment out of the kitchen. And then, AAA will come in and remove the floor tile, abate the asbestos flooring in there. And then, we'll have probably Flooring America, I may look at Arizona Tile, will come in and give us bids on that as well. But the asbestos removal is going to be the big part at roughly $4,800. We have a volunteer group over at Sangamon Valley West Elementary to paint the playground equipment. Again, we supply the paint, and they're going to paint the playground. You know what group Lacy would contact?
It's called Act 29, Branding Kids Group.
Okay.
Small group of kids.
So I would recommend that we do that. Moving on to the middle school, kind of a similar situation. We'll remove all the appliances from the K-PAC concession area. The staff will do that. They're also going to have to disassemble the stage, so they can get, put it back under the stage and get to the flooring. And then, again, AAA would come in and remove the asbestos tile at a cost of roughly $11,999. Looking at different options to replace that tile, what I would recommend doing is, once we get the tile up, is take a look at the concrete itself. And if the concrete is in good shape, then we do some sort of dime and grind, and just come in and seal the concrete and wax over it. The initial cost savings might not be that great as opposed to tile, but the maintenance and the durability will be pretty solid, I think, if we just go that route. It's a nice facility over there. I would like to see more of our plays, both from the high school and the middle school. We utilize that room because acoustically and just the setup of it, I think, is pretty nice. So it's a good area. A lot of people would die to have an additional large space like that in their building. And we're fortunate to have it, but I think we need to invest some money back into it. Next, I'm going to ask you to hire some staff to help out in the summer. I had some of our non-certified people approach me and say, hey, I would really like to work this summer. Are there, is there something that we can do here around the building? So sitting down with Bruce and Randy, some of the things that they talked about was the painting. That would free them up to do other maintenance-type stuffs, like stuff like we're seeing in the K-PAC and kitchens. Another thing that they said was the mowing. If they could get away from that, and if we could hire that done, that would help them out tremendously. So I do have some people that I'm going to ask to, for you to hire for maintenance and custodial work over the summer. I will have a list of those. I've been approached, I think, by four different people that...
That's on our relationship.
Yes. Four different people, four different non-certified staff members that came. So they, if we had something that we could do, they would be willing to do anything. Heather Vaughn is going to help us out over there as a custodian. So I think we will finally have some of the manpower that we need to do some of the projects and do things, kind of keep momentum going as far as our repairs and projects along those lines. I spoke with David Campbell, and I apologize for not having a bid yet, but I really feel like this is something that we need to do. The entryway of the middle school has a lot of paint chipping and kind of collapsing and that sort of thing. And so I will ask that we'll have David Campbell come in and take a look at that and give us a bid on that. And then, he will repair not only the foyer, but also do the north wall in the office.
Is that plaster? It's always looked bad there.
It's plaster, and there's always also moisture that comes in through the bricks. I think we're going to have to do a little bit of sealing of the outer bricks while we're doing that. And I think that will stop some of the paint from blooming off on the inside of it. And then, moving on to the high school. This is the big project that I would like to talk about in a little bit when we talk about the possibility of a late-May board meeting. I talked to you at the beginning here about the possibility, what I would like to see with a new science lab here in the high school. And I would like for you to allow BLDD to come in and do a presentation on what this room could look like. And then, David Pistorius, he is our bond salesman. He works for First Midstate. He would come and talk about finance options. And again, the good thing about this project is, I kind of put high on the estimate of roughly $400,000. It will probably be somewhere between the $350,000 to $400,000 range. Which seems like a lot to put in an old building, but at the same time, we're going to be here for a while. And I'd like to see another generation of kids go through and not have a science lab. You know, right now, we're sharing Coach Lee's, and we have basically two and a half teachers that have been, Mr. Schrader, trying to squeeze into his lab, and they're moving around. This room, I don't know if you guys have been up in here recently, but it's a huge room. And they're talking about three different areas, a STEM lab, a classroom, and then more like a gym lab in the back half of it, or the back third. And you could, they're going to have providers, and we could actually have two different classes going in that, going on in that room at the same time. So again, it's a lot of money, but within that bid, we'll also redo the walls, upgrade the windows. We're looking at that particular part of the building having its own HVAC system. So, and then, a good, a positive thing about that is, if we ever are fortunate enough to be able to build a new building, a lot of the supplies and the cabinetry and that sort of thing, when you do your design for the new building, you design in a similar manner, you can bring all of that stuff over and kind of reuse. So it is expensive, but you know, our math and science scores are not going to fix themselves. And I think this would go a long way to get kids interested in science. Mrs. England is a very enthusiastic teacher. She's very excited about the prospect of having a space like this. I just think it'd be awesome to provide that, not only for our kids, but for her to teach in that as well. And Mr. Schrader, be using that area as well, so. Next item on the high school list, remove appliances from the kitchen. Again, I mentioned that before, the staff will come in and completely gut the kitchen. They'll pull everything out, and then AAA will come in, abate the asbestos tile at a cost of $4,454. And then, again, we'll probably have Flooring America come in and put a new tile floor in there. I'm not sure of the condition of the concrete in any of those two rooms, but I think in the kitchen area, I think you probably want to go ahead and put tile back in. The cooks are also looking at some of the mats that they put down on the floor that they can stand on and kind of help relieve some of the stress off of their lower back. But I think, I think removing the tile and putting tile back in is a good option for them. We're also going to look to remodel the girls' and boys' restrooms on the second floor of the middle structure. That's a 1924 structure. That would be upstairs in the middle. Those bathrooms have had nothing done to them since I've been here, and that's 10 years. And they're in need of repair. And Bruce and Jason are going to take on that and hopefully be able to do that over the summer. Do you use, do you use whatever format people stand on? I suggest to buy ones that, we used to use the ones that were square, and Leeper and my size on that. Trip them over. I'll take a look at that when Amy comes with the quotes on those, make sure that they're developed. I'd also like to replace the partitions in the girls' and boys' restrooms by the gym. The one in the boys' bathroom has been repaired, I don't know, 1,000 times. It looks pretty bad, and the girls' as well. I think if we could get that area done, and also talk about getting a fresh coat of paint in that area, and also painting the ceiling area to the entryway of the gym, I think that would go a long way to make that whole entryway into the gym, and just make it look a lot nicer for our kids and our spectators and the company and stuff. And the last item that I have would be scrub the bleachers. And they're going to do that before graduation. I think we hired that out last time, and I asked Jason and Bruce if they could work on those. And it took them about six hours, so a total of 12 man-hours. on those, and it took them about six hours, so a total of twelve man-hours, to do it, and they did one side, but they came surprisingly clean. And I think that's something that I explained to them, we probably need to do the other half before graduation, and then before the start of school, we need to set aside time and do that again.
And as far as the summer work, in the, in the motion, I guess, we don't have the number from the painter, and we're not considering right now the science lab and remodeling. Should we make the motion to not include those items, or?
I think we could handle it in that manner, and then hopefully by the, if we are, if you want to do the special meeting in May, I could have those numbers for you.
Okay. So the motion-
I was going to add to the motion, the numbers not to exceed on the air conditioning systems. What were those? At here, at East, not to exceed?
Seven thousand and forty dollars.
And at West?
West was sixty-nine forty.
That allows you to get two more bids?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So the motion would then be to approve the list of summer items as presented, with the exception of the science lab and remodeling, and the air conditioning bid not to exceed at Sangamon Valley East Elementary, seven thousand forty dollars, Sangamon Valley West Elementary, six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to.
Made by Mike Staub, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Leonard Williams, call roll please. Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
With the exception of the science lab and the specifications on the air conditioning side, okay. And then we need a motion then to add a special board meeting on May twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, to discuss the funding and construction of a new science lab at Sangamon Valley High School. On the- Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Jeff Staub. Call roll please, and Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
It's six p.m.?
Six p.m. And go on with your Q and S.
Last fall, we looked at the proposal for Q and S, and I recommended that time that we hold off because at the end of this fiscal year, we would have paid off, we've been on kind of a revolving loan-type situation with Q and S where we've spent roughly seven thousand dollars a year on technology upgrades and, you know, to try to keep current on everything. And I recommended that we hold off to get all of that completely cleared off and then start over fresh. And so right now, I have a bid for twenty-four thousand eight sixteen, and that would be for technology upgrades. That would be a server at each, at each campus. That would replace all of the large computer monitors that are at Sangamon Valley East and also at the middle school, I believe. And then that would also allow us to upgrade thirty computers.
And we had held off on those monitors previously.
Yes. And again, that will spread the payment out to somewhere around seven thousand. There's a one point five percent finance charge of that, so probably somewhere around seventy-seven hundred dollars per year over three years. And that's something that comes directly out of the head fund. I think that's one of the reasons why in the past we've spread that out over the, over the three years.
So then I need a motion to purchase technology upgrades from Q and S for the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. On the- Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
I'll say it.
By Mike Oakley, call roll please. Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
And then preschool, pre-K funding for the next year.
This year, we've received just over twenty thousand dollars in tuition for our pre-K, and the reason I'm asking for you to do this today is I've checked around with other school districts, and no other school district is charging tuition for their pre-K program. Also, to go along with that, this coming year, we will have a high number of early childhood students which qualify for those services under the Special Education Act, and we cannot charge those kids for those services. And what we have done in the past, we have taken all of those kids, the early childhood kids, and we've put them over at the Sangamon Valley West campus. And then what happens then is that limits the number of students from that half of the district to get into pre-K, and that leaves a larger number of kids from this side to get into pre-K. And what I would like to see is to, for one, I think education makes good sense to split those numbers into smaller numbers, and then that will also provide each side of the district equal opportunity. And again, there's really not, we look at pre-K based on student need, and you have to qualify, so they do the testing and all that. And I think part of the problem with the tuition that went along with that was the part that the parents had to transport. And we run a route in between the pre-Ks, the morning and the afternoon sessions. We could very easily drop the kids off and pick up the afternoon kids and take them back. And then the early, the morning pre-K would ride a bus to, ride our normal routes to school, and then they would be taken home in the late morning, and then the afternoon kids would be picked up, taken to pre-K, and then the afternoon pre-K kids would get on their own bus and ride home. This is an opportunity, I think, for one, we're not going to get a great deal of money, but also I believe that at the end of this year, we'll have two classes of twenty and twenty in pre-K. And if we're going to run the program, it would be nice, I think, to, first of all, to have those, if we have that number of kids that need those services, which I believe we do, I think it'd be nice to provide that opportunity to them. And I think some of the parents that probably couldn't afford, their kids probably need the services and they weren't there. So that is my reasoning for recommending that we fully fund pre-K. This will not have any impact if the grant is available to fund this, it's a competitive grant. They're not going to look and say, well, if you funded it last year, you must be okay so you can do it again this year. That's not how they do business. Again, it's a competitive grant, so there's an opportunity that we could receive funding in the future for.
Do we know the approximate increase in cost?
I would not know that until we got the final numbers of the early childhood.
And how many are?
Yes. And I'm not sure that we-
I think we had a ballpark, I think we said eleven in total early childhood, so I think you had six at your building and five relative to Harastown.
So those could stay at their buildings, and then that would open up those numbers of spots for-
How many spots do you-
Typically, we do not go over twenty. I know Mrs. Weiske always doesn't fill exactly to twenty. She leaves one or two spots open in both, well, it used to be in your building, that would be both, because you always have kids that qualify throughout the year that are early childhood, and so they can fill in those spots. So I would say maximum of eighteen. We're not at eighteen at Harastown this year because we just didn't have anyone from Eliopoulos that wanted to come over and fill those spots.
So you're still screening students? Yes. And then fill the extra spots from there?
Well, we are done screening, and so what happens is there's a ranking system, once they do the screening, and you get certain points for, for different things, I guess, lack of a better term. So they've done all that, she's just waiting to make the phone calls, depending on what decision was made this evening to let people know if they did get in.
Okay. So then I would need a motion to fully fund pre-K and provide transportation for the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year.
Salute.
Motion made by Leonard Williams, is there a second?
I'll say it.
By Mike Staub, call roll please. Barrero? Yes. Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And then, talking about the upcoming IASB conference.
I'll need a reclamation or a motion to allow the board to attend the fall conference again. I think it's an excellent opportunity for the board to attend and get professional development that otherwise would not be able to have. It's a nice conference, and there are so many things, so many different breakout sections, and you have an opportunity to pick things that you feel is important for the district. To me, I think it's a great thing. Our teachers are required to do professional development unfunded, a mandate, by the way, and I think it's a good idea that the board. I was, I was a little nervous, I was skeptical, but absolutely worthwhile. It was my first time that I had been last year. I would very much like to go back. What was the, do you know what the cost was last year to go? You know, I asked Carol to give me that number, and I think it was right around four thousand. And that paid for-
That was four of us? Four of us.
Four of us, and basically there are rooms for two nights. Two nights or three nights?
Three nights. Because it started on a Friday, so we went out Thursday night so we could start right away. Yeah. And we have to, enrollment for this year is when June?
June thirteenth.
I would encourage anybody, you know, to go that can. I think it was a good learning experience, and I think we've started a lot of new things due to what we learned while there. So I thought it was beneficial, or what it's worth. So then we could go on, motion to approve the board to attend the annual IASB conference in November twenty sixteen. I'll make a motion. Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
I'll say it.
By Mike Staub, call roll please. Barrero? Yes. Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
So anybody interested in going should let you know before the thirteenth, so that we can. If we can do maybe a reminder for the agenda for the legitimate we have for, so maybe it's like that, especially. Okay. So everybody could kind of decide if they're, once you want to-
What were the dates again?
It's the weekend prior to Thanksgiving, always, every year.
During Dersing. Yeah. It is.
One of the years will be there when you get back, right?
Yeah.
November, you start on the eighteenth and go through the twentieth.
First shot, yeah.
Okay. And before we go on to the next item on the agenda, I wanted to kind of speak to this item. I went ahead and contacted our school attorney, asked if there was a policy in place regarding it. He indicated there was no policy. He would suspect that no policy exists because it would be illegal. He said as long as the board members meet residency and filing requirements to run for the board, any policy with additional restrictions would be beyond the limits of the law. I also called IASB to verify if there was any information. That's the Illinois Association of School Boards that kind of mandates what we are allowed to do and not do here at our board table. They also told me that board members are elected by the public and cannot be removed from their seat unless there's a major dereliction of duty or felony conviction, et cetera. They also said this is the work of the regional superintendent of schools and not board work. I've given, given all of you a copy of my correspondence with Mr. Braun, and also copied the two statutes from the Illinois School Code that addresses. First one is the requirement to be elected to and hold a position on a school board, and the second deals with the work of the county superintendent of schools. The county superintendent can remove for only one reason, as indicated by Illinois Skill Code, and it appears that Mr. Staub continues to attend meetings and participate in the governance of SV. Whether or not we agree with Mr. Staub's decision based on the statutes I provided you from school code, this issue is not within our jurisdiction as a board and within our duties to deal with. So again, you have those copies that are given you, and we would move on to the next motion on the agenda.
Still think it's very important he wouldn't resign if you're not going to send all of your children to this district. They use it on this board and represent.
Well, I'll tell you something, a lot of things that you spread, rumors you spread out there-
This isn't a rumor, this is the truth.
This is the truth.
So do you want it? Do you agree with it?
It's none of my business.
How does it not agree with it?
It's not, it's not my business what he does.
It's slap your face to-
It's what he wants.
No, personally what he does, it's not none of my business, but when he's sitting on this board, he represents the district.
That's right. And so do you-
And by not sending all of his children to this, to this district-
Let him run in your mouth all the time, too.
Basically, it's a personal decision that each family has to make, and we don't have any control over that, so.
I'll make sure everybody in the public knows.
Well, can I say one thing?
You can say whatever.
Why didn't you have a problem when Dan Giedel sent his granddaughter, who he had guardianship, to Decatur School? Why didn't you fuck up?
Oh, you didn't know. Sure you didn't know, Mike.
You know everything on that side of town. That's ridiculous. It's, your, your group is do as I say, not as I do.
I'll make sure, are you being-
Sure. It's right here. It's right here.
Yeah. I think you should step down.
I'm not going to.
I'm not going to. I know you're not.
Good day.
And that's all I can do.
We still have a child in the school.
Yeah, we have one graduating instead of the-
But not all your children. It's a topic. No, it's not. You stand, let's just move on. Point of order.
You can have an opinion, but it has to-
What is your, what is your opinion, Martha? I'd like to know.
It does not matter what my opinion is because-
So you don't have an opinion of the matter?
I, I go by what the rules say.
Well, I'd like to know your opinion.
I don't have to have an opinion. That is his personal decision. But the rules, the law, which is the only thing you can fall back on, you can have an opinion, but your opinion means nothing when the law is concerned, and the state law says-
I voice in my opinion.
And you'll voice it on Facebook and everywhere. And go Ryan Myers at ten WSO. I have a call for Ryan Myers. Email me that one.
Okay.
I heard about that one. Good for you.
On to the next item.
Would you like me to start forwarding those to you, too?
This is very relevant. I think it's time to move on.
It is.
At the next point of order here is closed session, so I would like to have a motion to enter closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Salute. Second.
Motion made by Leonard Williams, second by Mike Oakley, call roll please. Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Tom?
Six.
Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Leeper? Yes. Okay. I need a motion to employ Brooke Never as middle school cheer coach for the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year.
Salute.
Motion made by Leonard Williams, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Jeff Staub, call roll please. Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Leeper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Motion to employ Tyler Ford as eighth grade girls' basketball coach for the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year.
I'm going to.
Motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Leonard Williams, call roll please. Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub? Motion to employ Nick Veeley as boys' JV basketball coach for the 2016-2017 school year.
I'll move.
Motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second?
I'll say it.
By Mike Oakley, call roll please. Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. Leaper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Motion to employ Cindy Urban as the high school dance coach for the 2016-2017 school year. So moved. Motion made by Martha Leaper, is there a second?
I'll say it.
By Leonard Williams, call roll please. Barrero? Yes. Leaper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams? Need a motion to employ summer maintenance and custodial help. Calling employees Jennifer Tate, Mary Hamm, Heather Vaughn, Gavin Hawkins, Dalton Tressner, Terry Doty, Michael Lee and Tim Dooley. I'll move. Motion made by Martha Leaper, is there a second?
Say it.
By Mike Oakley, call roll please. Leaper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Barrero? Yes. And at this point, if there's nothing further, I need a motion.
I have a couple of things. I think it would be there, Mr. Williams sent, there was an email shared about a misfigure at the state level and us owing $57,000. Do you know anything about that? Oh, the corporate personal? Yeah. Where we are with that, it's not money that we're going to have to return to the state. What they will do is, there is legislation to waive that. I don't think it will pass. But if not, what will happen, July 1st, or January 1st of 2017, they will start pro-rating that until it's made up. And they'll do it over the course of a few years. And we should get somebody back to state aid. It's not, it's not a dollar for dollar. It won't be dollars for dollar, I'll tell you that. A good example, I'm speaking with the Monticello Superintendent and he gave, I think there's somewhere around $330,000 that they were able to pay. And the state aid that he was set to get out of that was something like $4,000 or so.
We should pro-rate our thing of that.
Also, I think the last meeting you talked about having a roof issue at the gym. Was that covered under warranty?
It is covered under warranty and the architects are working on that to get them in to repair.
It's still not fixed, though?
No. And I'm hoping that we can get ahold of these people to come back out and fix it, but.
Didn't we have issues with them on getting that second coating?
Yes. And they may not even be in existence anymore, so we're working on that. Can I get them in to, to fix it? To honor the warranty, then we'll probably have to look at other options. Then the legislation passes and ours pushing through, we're gonna have to watch our money the next three years because the three years of saying that may be taking the money away from the districts that are considered rich, which we are, to help the poor districts, so. And that's what's, because we were physically responsible, we're looking a lot of chance. Yeah, it's that and the possibility of a property tax raise over the course of the next three years is something else that. It's just something that we're gonna have to watch and we're gonna have to deal with. Make a motion to the chairman.
Made by Leonard Williams, is there a second?
Say it.
By Mike Oakley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?